City Council, we need to come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repoza?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Let everyone in the council please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Please remain standing for a suit to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the first matter before the council is a communication from the Director of Financial Services and quotes for the annual independent audit, which was objected to at the last council meeting.
Entertainer motion to lift the item from the table?
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion is made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to move the question.
Any opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Finance to conduct interviews with all three contracted contractors?
Second.
Motion to refer the item to Finance to conduct interviews with all three?
We have a roll call on that.
Yes, please.
Sure. Anyone understand the motion has been made and seconded? Roll call.
The motion would be to refer to the Committee on Finance to conduct interviews with the three candidates. Councillors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Carrera?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repoza?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. President, can we take item 12 out of order, the citation?
Absolutely, Counselor. Motion to take item 12 out of order has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt the citation?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the citation. This is the wrong citation. But we'll adopt this one anyway. The other one was filed after the agenda, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have it out of order, we can vote on both. Let's vote on this one, as a matter of fact. Motion to adopt the citation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now entertainer motion to take item 12A.
Motion so made, second.
Motion to take item 12A out of order has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt 12A.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Maggie, will you come down, please? I just realized, I forgot to sign the citation. Before I begin, I want to introduce everyone to Maggie O'Connell.
You have to give a speech, you know.
No, you don't, Maggie.
I just want to read some of the accomplishments of this young lady. Can you hear me clearly?
We can.
So Maggie is the recipient of the Boston Globe Athletic Scholarship Award. She was cross-country for five years at Durfy High School. She was cross-country as an eighth grader, beating all the high school kids. Excuse me? After that, she was a four-year Herald News Runner of the Year, four times Herald News Runner of the Year, four times Cross Country Most Valuable Player, five times Cross Country Southeast Conference League All-Star, two times Southeast Conference League Champion and League MVP. She holds three course records. Four-year varsity basketball starter, two-time Southeast Conference League All-Star, Durfy Collins, Dave, uh, Durfy's Dave Collins Award nominee, Boys and Girls Club All-Star and Scholarship winner, Herald News Shootout All-Star player, Mike Karen All-Star Shootout Player, two-year spring track, one-year winter track, two-year Southeast Conference All-Star, undefeated in the mile and two-mile in league playing, top-ten in the state for the mile. I'm getting tired already. Do you want all that stuff?
That's a pleasure to play football.
Two-year varsity tennis, first double Southeast Conference All-Star, second singles Southeast Conference All-Star. She's the first student in the history of Durfy to win fourteen varsity letters.
Wow.
It's a major accomplishment.
Wow.
She signed to run D1 cross-country with Seton Hall in the Honors College and combined for that three, four-plus-three med track. She graduated fifth in her class. If we were to talk about her academic accomplishments, we'd be here long past ten o'clock. So Maggie, I want to thank you, commend you on all that you've done.
That's amazing.
Your family is very proud of you, I am very proud of you as well, as far as everyone else. But we're giving you an official resolution, be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its condemnation to Maggie O'Connell, 2024 Boston Globe Foundation Richard J. Phelps Scholarship/Athlete Scholarship, Scholar/Athlete Scholarship, in recognition of your outstanding excellence in athletics, academics, and extracurricular activities, to become the recipient of the Boston Globe Foundation Richard J. Phelps Scholar/Athlete Scholarship. Be it further resolved that the former City Council sends best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be entered into the record of the City Council, adopted June 11, 2024, proposed by myself, and I signed officially ten seconds ago. And it's signed by the clerk, Allison Bush. Maggie, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara and the rest of the City Council for this recognition. I'm honored to be receiving the Boston Globe Athletic Scholarship as a representative of Fall River. Running the city streets has made me the athlete I am today, and as I continue my athletic career, I will let everyone know where I come from. Thank you.
Maggie, I like, I know you like to run. Someday, I hope you run for office.
Mr. President?
None of us will ever catch up.
Can we take item five out of order, Mohawk Drive? Second.
Motion to take item five out of?
I must have a wrong agenda tonight here.
Twenty-one.
Item twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Second.
Twenty-one.
It's okay.
Is it revised? Yeah, I got it.
Motion to take item twenty-one out of order has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to table item twenty-one.
Second.
Motion to table item twenty-one has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You want to have discussion on it, Counselor?
I do.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Ponti?
I'd like to refer it to the Committee on?
Real estate?
Would be Public Works and Transportation, so that these individuals who are in the audience tonight can come before that committee, have a discussion, and hear what the real problems are. So I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation. Second.
Do you want to go?
Do we have to deal with the table first, or?
Table takes President.
The President, right. Counselor, you, you, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor in seat two, did you handle it before?
No.
Okay, surprise. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Espirero.
Um, I did have the opportunity to speak with Attorney Rumsey, and as Counselor in seat number one said, Mr. Agia, the city engineer, has been involved in this, and Attorney Rumsey will look over the packet that we received tonight to gain more information on if we accepted the street or didn't, what ramifications that would have, but they are looking into it to have a meeting without having all the information. I think just to table it, and if we need to refer it anywhere, we can lift it from the table and put it anywhere, but at least we'll have Attorney Rumsey do some of the legwork to see legally what can and can't be done in this area, along with the Division of Wildlife and the Division of Tree Commission, and Mr. Labassia has actually gone out and met with everyone there as well. So we'll just get more information. With that, I yield, thank you.
There you go, Counselor. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kevi.
Yes, I would just add, request Mr. Rumsey, put this down as a priority in his office, and sooner than later, we'd like, we'd like that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So the motion to table, take presidencies.
Roll call.
Roll call.
On the motion to table, Councillor Kadim?
No.
Dion? Yes. Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
Ponti?
No.
Repoza?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Just to make people aware, all that means is that we are putting this on the side, we will bring it up to fruition at another point in time. We're going to give the attorney time to do his due diligence, talk to other people, and we can schedule a meeting. We can lift it from the table and refer it to the committee appropriate, do whatever we want to do with it back then. All right? You people will be advised, Clerk has contact information, we'll let you know when that takes place. But right now, there will be no action taking place on it. All right? Just to make everybody aware of what's happening, I don't want to have any confusion out there. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can we take item sevenA out of order, please?
Yeah, let me just write these down, so I don't go back to them again. Seven and eight, you said?
SevenA, please.
SevenA?
Which is the budget.
Motion to take item sevenA out of order has been made and seconded.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on June 10th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying budget be referred to the full council for action with Councillor Kadim absent and not voting. This is the FY '25 municipal budget.
I've taken a motion?
Two. Motion to take the appropriation order by line item?
Second.
Motion to take appropriation by line item has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On the motion, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Ponti?
Thank you. So I want to just make a couple of quick comments on the motion to take the appropriation by line item by line item. I've taken quite a bit of, you know, copious notes. This council has done, I thought, a really good job this year as an overall body, asking questions, and I'm going to just state what I think is the obvious, in my opinion. There are some items that, you know, I am not totally in favor of, which I've articulated on more than one occasion. First thing is when we go to facilities maintenance, you know, we have the possibility of a stipend that's there that I personally don't agree with. There's lots of different employees, and I appreciate Mr. Aiken sending, giving over to us tonight, a additional responsibilities and a job description, which I very appreciate his work on that. But there is lots of different employees and department heads throughout the city that are doing a lot of work, and candidly, everybody deserves raises, and so I don't personally agree with that, and that's my opinion on that. In addition, within that same footprint, under facilities maintenance, I'm also seeing, and again, this isn't about the individual, it's about the process, I'm also not in favor of seeing a increase for the Director of the Department at $155,000 when his contract states a completely different number, which I believe is $140,000, if I'm correct. Let me just make sure I'm correct. Yeah, that would be $140,000 for that contract, that's on page 141 of our budget. That, that's just, that's minor in nature, but two specific items that, when it comes to that line item and the appropriation, I'm going to make a motion to reduce the facility's salaries by the $15,000 and the stipend by 13. In addition, I, I feel under insurance, the employer ER, employer insurance, that the appropriation for my colleague's edification is on, starts on page 252, 252 in our budget. The, the administration has decided to allocate 3.37 million dollars to the Employer Trust Fund, and personally looking, and I, when I bump this back, and I spent a lot of time on this today, when I bumped this back to the report, the quarterly report that the City Council had a couple of weeks ago, that's from March 31st, 2024, the city hasn't received a good amount of revenue under the Employer Trust Fund. We haven't received a reimbursement from the school department, which is going to be good for probably $1.4 million. We haven't seen our stop-loss reimbursement, which, the trajectory from every year prior, '21, '22, and '23 ranges between income for the employer of 1.7 million to 4.1 million, and I, I'm just taking what the anticipated expenses would be by averaging the fiscal year '21, '22, and '23 for a total expenses of $42 million. Now, what does that mean for my colleagues and the people at home who don't have this piece of paper in front of them? I personally believe that when you take the beginning fund balance, which is in our quarterly report, the last quarterly report for my colleagues who don't have it, we have a beginning balance of $6.9 million of capital, of cash available in the Employer Trust Fund. That's number one. Number two, when you take the school department's reimbursement that were expected, plus the stop-loss expenses that we're getting, plus the city's required appropriation from the general fund, which is still due at the time of this report, another $7 million, we would be, we would have about $42 million in total revenue. So what I decided to do was take the $42 million plus the beginning balance, and if you take that all into consideration, the city would have upwards of $15 to $20 million in the employer ER, so I'm clear, trust account. I personally believe if the City Council reduced the appropriation under the insurance account by $2.3 million and no longer use one-time money in this municipal budget, we will not have to use one-time money and have a healthier budget going into next year with no future deficits. Now, I know this might be very convoluted and hard to understand, I'd be happy to speak about it some more, I'd be happy if you want to bring the, if the council wants to bring the administration down to discuss this, but I personally think we have to get away from using one-time money. So I'm going, when that appropriation comes, I'm going to make that motion to reduce it, if I get the support from my colleagues, by so it be, but I think we need to get away from using one-time money. The Employer Trust Fund would have excess money in the Employee Trust Fund, when I just did behind-the-napkin math, it doesn't even, it makes total sense, and, and that's, and that's conservative. The analysis that I quickly did is conservative, because stop-loss is revenue from the Employer Trust Fund that only brought in $402,000, it's going to bring in a lot more than that. We don't know how much we're going to get from the school department, that's 1.4 million, and we're expected to still get a transfer from the general fund of $7 million, so there's going to be ample money, assuming we don't get walloped with claims, but I'd rather utilize that in our operational budget instead of using one-time money to balance it, which we really have to get away from. I, I want to urge my colleagues, like, we're all talking for years about how diamond's coming, and oh my goodness, we don't want to lay off police and fire. It's a tough conversation to have, but when you have this money sitting in the Employer Trust Fund in a, from a conservative number, we have to stop working with one-time money, because next year, we're going to have a structural deficit, for sure. We still haven't, we, we, we use $1.9 million in capital in the budget, so they're going to have to add that, plus the fire department and the police department, both are seeing in 2025, when their collective bargaining agreement is up, they're also probably going to be seeing increases there. So we really have to stop doing it, and in my opinion, this is the only way I personally could see us doing that without using one-time free cash of 2024 to balance the municipal budget this year. We have to get away with it. My esteemed colleague in seat one has been talking about this for years. We were talking about this when we started relying on the state, which we have to rely heavily on aid from the state, but we have to stop having, we have to make some tough decisions now, and if for some reason the claims come in so high, it's not going to be the first time this council has seen a transfer from free cash or stabilization to the employer ER Trust Fund. Now, I hope my colleagues recognize where I'm coming from here, I'm not trying to do you any gutters here, but it's just basic math, and in addition to that, I will say that just quick numbers, if we took $2.3 million out of the Employer Trust Fund, they will still have over $4 million plus to use for claims as you carry over into the next fiscal year in an account that is constantly revolving. And for my colleagues, if they ever have any issue with this, if you go back to 2022, you started your ending balance with $4.2 million in it, in '23, you had 6.9, you have 8.4 right now, and that's going to continue to increase with all of the expenses and the income on a conservative basis, in my opinion. So I'm just going to make that motion when it comes, and then my final comment on the appropriation order, Mr. President, is going to be, I am taking serious exception to the utilization of this reserve account. I did not yet, after deliberating with the administration as professionally as we all did, any kind of clear understanding or explanation as to what we're doing with the reserve fund of $846,000. I don't have a piece of paper anywhere that shows me anything about what your expectations are to do with that. We're talking about maybe coming down to pay ASME a 2% increase, but as our, as our President has stated on more than one occasion to the administration, not putting words in your mouth, we have items in the salary lines that aren't exact salary lines, that's not zero-based budgeting. We have increased it every ASME employee in our budget 2%. So then I asked the question of, what are we going to do with the reserve account of $846,000? Where does, where does that come from? And they say, well, if we have police that we need to hire, then we might need to go hire, but you have 13 open positions in the police department. I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Counselor. 14 open positions, and we're not sure what we're going to do with that. I don't have a clear explanation or any kind of a summary on what we're doing with that. So when that item comes before us, I'm also going to make a motion to reduce that line item by $646,000, so to give them a reserve account of $200,000 to work with. So that might be a little over $2.3 million of suggested reductions. This is by no means, in my opinion, going to shorthand the city's ability to run its day-to-day operations. This is the council being bold, being bold in not relying on one-time free cash to balance a municipal budget. That's what it is. It's, it's deciding to get away from using our savings account to pay our bills. So I ask my colleagues to try to digest this, and for, for now, I'll yield, Mr. President. Thank you.
There you go, Counselor.
Motion, motion to waive the rules, for the administration, come down?
Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If we could, when we're talking to the administration, let's talk about the numbers strictly to the budget, numbers, not hypothetical situations of what will happen if we don't do this, so let's just talk about what the numbers and revenues will be, keep it as precise as possible.
If we can, Mr. President, point of information, what point of order? I think if we don't talk about operations, like running departments, I think if we stay on numbers, that would probably save time, because there, this whole budget is hypothetical. Every item is hypothetical.
It always is, correct.
If, if we could not talk about how the Parks Department is run, and we talked about finances, I think would be better off.
I think that's what I just said.
That is.
Talk about the numbers and go on to the budgets, and not talk about hypothetical situations, that's exactly what I said, but that's okay. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion?
Yeah, just, can we start right at the top, at general government, and just work our way down, because I'm?
Counselor, we can do whatever we want to do. You're in control.
Well, I don't want to fall in the trap, we're, we're starting on page three, then we're going back to page one, then we're going to page four, and then that, I think we're going to fall, well, thank you. Oh, he's a steed, and I'm smart today.
Don't tell you that.
If we could just do that, just so it's methodical and we don't lose our, don't lose our place.
It works for me, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
It's all be methodical and not lose our place tonight, we'll be fine. And you did say, bold, not bald, right?
Yeah, right, I'm bald.
I'd like to have?
Mr. President, could I just? Could I just, I guess, I agree with going down the order in terms of the appropriation, but I, I think the larger question that my colleague had mentioned was just the health insurance, just, so while that's fresh on our mind, can we at least just address the health insurance and then?
Like I said, Counselor, we can do whatever we want. If you want to start with the health insurance and go back down the line, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Whatever makes it simple, I'm good with that.
Can I just?
Can we have the HR director come down, because he does the health insurance?
Absolutely. I do want to say Counselor in seat two has the floor right now.
It's okay, I'll yield.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Espirero.
Yeah, I would like that to be addressed on the health insurance, because for years when we've sat here, Chipper Kamara has been very involved with the insurance, and he always comes down here and complains that we take money out of the employer fund to pay to run the city, and how that is not what should be done, even if people get money back or whatever, an insurance break or what have you, but that's been something that I have heard constant, for the 28 years I've been here, I've heard that constantly. So is this something new that we're going to do? Because we've done it before, and then we were told we couldn't, we shouldn't.
Sure, go ahead, I yield. I mean, quite a few people know Chipper and I definitely disagree on many things, but this is the one thing that we do agree on.
Okay.
And I've spoken publicly about how we have taken money out of health insurance and transferred it to the schools for net school spending, I think that's a very bad practice. I think the balance in this fund, and I've spoken to our health insurance advisors, Gallagher, that this, the employer balance is too low for what it should be, for what's considered best practice by experts. I'm sorry that your accounting I don't agree with, because it's a timing thing, I mean, at the end of May, there was 3-point-something million, it was down to 3-point-million. There's timing issues that happen, the school just sent over their transfer, I don't have the dollar amount handy, but that account should have more than $10 million in it. So that, we stopped the practice of taking money from that account to meet net school spending. spending. That is not, that is not a good practice. And even at 10 million, it's not the ideal place because that's, when you're self-insured, you should be able to smooth so you don't have large ups and downs, and we're trying to be able to do that with the, with the employees. So right now, what's in the employee side of the trust fund is 9 million? 9 million. And I mean, if they're only contributing 25% of it, what does that tell you where our balance should be?
Yeah. And we don't have that. We've never had that.
No, no.
I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C1, do you have your handle correct?
I did, thank you, Mr. President. So I did share the third quarter budget, just in case you, third budget quarter, let me try this again, quarter three budget report that my colleague had mentioned. So I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with my colleague, and I think everybody in the council chamber would agree that, you know, we, we do need to get away from the one-time monies. And I applaud him for, you know, looking in and diving into the, the health insurance line items. But can you just speak a little bit more to the third quarter budget analysis that you presented? So the ending balance is showing 8.5 million, but when, when you look at excess revenue over expenditures, it's really 1.6? Is that?
Yeah. Well, so there's, yeah, that's, it's 1.6, correct. So that, this is a timing thing. I mean, there's, it doesn't just happen evenly throughout the year.
Yep.
And I, I'm not as familiar with like the timing of when everything comes in.
No, I recognize that. I'm sure we've got, and I don't know what the IBNR number is going to be.
Well, that's the other thing, you have run-out claims.
Right.
So you've got 60 days of run-out claims. It's just, it's a more complicated issue than just being able to annualize over this. And again, we could have a really bad year, and I think it's, it's very disappointing when you have to go and ask employees to do double-digit increases. And the whole point of having self-insurance is that you're supposed to be able to smooth that out. And right now, we're not in a position to be able to do that. We've been very lucky because we have a young population at the school department where we have the majority of, you know, I mean, it's obviously the biggest part of our workforce. And we should be building up that balance. And again, I'm, I'm not going to waver on that, on my opinion, because I've spent countless years working with self-insurance, and when I got here, I was very disappointed in where our balance was.
So I, I think, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I don't, I don't think my colleague disagrees with you in terms of making sure that we have a, a balance that makes the most sense. And I, and I think when we start talking about financial policies, I think that's a policy that, you know, the city councils should really kind of approve at your recommendation to make sure that we're all on the same page. For the stabilization accounts, the, you know, especially for the employee trust fund, the employer trust fund. But with regards, and I think you said $10 million, and I, I'm not sure if this is what, what you meant, but what is, I mean, I think the rule of thumb is probably three months' worth of, of claims coming in. So is that, is that the $10 million number that you're coming up with, or can you tell me what three months' worth of claims, and I know it's, it's a moving target?
Probably about 7.5 million.
So, three months is 7.5 million?
Yeah. About. I'd have to double-check, but.
Okay.
And obviously, self-insured, that can spike, that could be lower.
But generally, when we, you know, this, this, this account goes down to like barely $2 million at times.
No, no, and I recognize that, and I, and I think for the people, for the folks at home that are probably not familiar with being self-insured and what that means, typically when we pay for health insurance, it's, it's a policy, it's a rate payment. Here, the city has to pay for all the claims that are coming.
Exactly.
So that's.
We're, we're, we're bearing the burden.
Right.
7.5 million would be ER.
Okay. So in terms of that, so you're saying right now, we only have the 1.5 million. My colleague?
Well, I'm saying it, I know, like, I had the May 31 number pulled, and it was like 3.5 million.
And was the, was the appropriation that we typically have in the, for the year, so, so obviously for fiscal year '25, we're suggesting 37.7. Has that all been transferred into the employer trust fund?
We, so this is also, I mean, we, a practice that we started when I got here was that we are actually transferring the entire appropriation over. There's been times in previous years that the entire appropriation was not transferred over.
So this year, it has been?
I don't, we transferred over evenly, so I'm not, it's, it's done monthly, so it's, we probably have one or two transfers to do.
Okay, all right. But so it's, it's caught up if you, if you spread it over the 12-months.
Yeah, we, we actually spread that over, you know, monthly, what we transfer over.
So the three months of claims is $7 million. So what was the 10 million that you're talking about in terms of trying? Is that just a target number that you're looking for?
No, so you can do three months of claims or you can do, you know, a percentage of, you know, an average. And we, we have, and I don't have the number because I wasn't asked for it, but we did speak to Gallagher about this, who's, who's the health insurance advisor that the city uses. And I thought it was like 12. I'd have to get the exact number, but it's around 10 million at least.
And then you're, when you, when you made the statement in terms of asking the employees to, I guess, to see a double-digit increase, that's, that's due to the fact that you wouldn't be able to sell funds like holidays or bring down, use some of that, that funds to reduce the?
Correct, correct.
The year-over-year increase.
To smooth over your year-over-year increases.
Okay.
So we don't have spikes for, to our employees.
So can you, I guess, and maybe I'll, I'll yield at this point, and if my colleague wants to ask specific questions, he can, he can ask those questions, but if you can just kind of articulate, I mean, you heard what he, what he had mentioned, so I'm just curious to see what you have to say about if, if we do reduce the, you know, the budget by 2.3 million and make that 35.4 million, what, what's the impact?
I think that's a very dangerous impact because there's assumptions that are being made that you, you can't annualize the insurance. So I, I don't, I'd be scared that we would not possibly have enough money to pay claims one or two months. So I don't, I mean, that's not a best practice.
Right. But if that were the case, we, we could, you could always come back and ask for an appropriation from stabilization, right, in, in terms of making those transfers?
Well, the hope is to not be taking money from stabilization.
No, no, I recognize, I recognize that. But I, I think if, I, I, what I guess what I'm saying is, is if the intent is trying to reduce the budget to get rid, to eliminate the use of one-time monies.
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So yes, one-time monies, but when you, when you actually end up with a surplus that we have, you're, you're not actually using those one-time monies because you're replenishing them. So you, when you budget, you budget based on unknowns, and you, and you plan for the, for what's the worst or the average. And so that's why you do that, but we've been able to not have to actually use those one-time monies the last two years. So I think that needs to be taken into account because we've actually had a surplus. So again, you budget for, you know, you want, you want to budget for contingencies, and actually, I mean, can I go on? Because, so on, as far as the reserve fund, under the Mass General Law Chapter, I think it's 40, you, you're not allowed to itemize out your reserve fund. Your reserve fund is supposed to be for unforeseen, that you don't know exactly. So if you actually do itemize it out and say exactly, like, you know what it's for, then it's disallowed. So again, like, we're practicing best practices, and we're trying to do the right thing.
Does that hold true for the stabilization, stabilization account as well?
So you could have, you could have a general stabilization, or you could have specific stabilization funds. We're not at the point now where we can actually start having multiple stabilization funds.
Because in the past, we've had itemized stabilization funds, but that's all right. I just want to make sure.
You can assign, yeah, you can assign special purpose stabilization.
Just want to make sure, and I mentioned it to the mayor, and I just wanted to make sure that I was correct in knowing that we could do that.
So I'm going to, I'm going to yield for now in terms of the, the healthcare, and then I'll come back for the line item.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C6, Counselor Diaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just so we're clear, there's a difference between the employee and the employer trust account, okay? What the, what the, what the, what the hesitancy in the past has been, the city going to the employee trust fund, okay? That has been a practice of the past, I think.
The city can't touch that account.
Right, without, without getting approval from the.
PEC.
PEC, right. But there, if, if the PEC does allow us to do that with the votes that are there appointed by the mayor's office, they could essentially do that.
I don't know that they could do that. They could do plan design, they could do things to change the plan.
They can incur expenses.
To lower the cost, but I don't think that they could transfer money to the city to pay those.
They actually cannot because you can only use it for health insurance reasons.
Right. So my, my point is.
Give me one second, Counselor. Whoever has the fan on that's, a little pounding noise, can we just check the fans, guys? There's a, there's a pounding noise in the background. Something's banging.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make it clear, there's a difference between the employee and the employer trust fund, just so that we're aware. There's been apprehension about that in the past. So I am taking this position, and if my colleagues don't want to support it, but, that's fine. But you will have excess money in this account, even, even if we do, if we do this. You're going to have excess money in the employer account to pay claims going into fiscal year 2025. You will have the money there. It's not like we're wiping you clean.
So again, if we wanted to do what's best practice, we would have a balance in there of at least three months of claims at a minimum, and what you're suggesting is we wouldn't have that.
But you don't have, you haven't had it all year this year, so why all of a sudden do we need to have it now? I'm just asking. I, I don't mean to be.
I don't like to, I, I mean, you know.
You just said that there was.
So I just don't, I don't like to gamble with, with something like that. I, I don't think it's a good idea.
So then where, where would we be able to find money in a budget to not utilize one-time money to balance it?
So I prepared, we prepared a budget with the administration, and this is the budget that we prepared, and we feel that this is the budget that's needed.
Right. Okay. Well, look, I, I'll, I'll wait for this item to come back up. If the council doesn't want to do it, that's fine. How much did you get back from the school department for your school grant reimbursement this year? You mentioned that you, you received it.
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't know that off the top of my head.
All right, but in, on average, for the last three fiscal years, you received 1.4 million.
And we, we take that into account. If you look at that page.
Well, no, it's not, it's not taken into account here.
No, not there. If you look at the appropriation and what we transfer over.
I see that.
So then we, we actually start out with a much higher number, and then we, we actually reduce those that we recover.
I see that.
And that's how we get to the appropriation.
Right, but if I look to your actuals, which is the only thing I can look at for the last couple fiscal years, I see that you, we didn't include it because we didn't receive it in March. We're going to end up having in revenue over $42 million in the employer trust fund then, with expenses of 42 million on average, and that's conservative. So you're going to have ample money to do that, and we don't have to use one-time money to balance the budget. We don't necessarily have to make the motion to reduce the budget by 2.3. We could take, we could take one, we could, we can balance it out from the, the utilization of the reserve account. So we can, we can reduce it by 1.6 million instead because I hope that we can reduce our reserve account to 200 instead of 846,000, that there's no clear explanation of what we're going to do with it.
Again, I thought, I did address that. You're not, Mass General Law does not allow you to itemize and specify what a reserve fund would be used for because it's for unforeseen. You don't know the exact amount.
In 2018, I think they had $200,000 in their reserve account to use, FY 2018, when I go all the way back. All the other years, they, they bloated it up with 2 million, 2.3, because there was collective bargaining that was outstanding, and that might needed to have been closed. So this isn't the first time the reserve account would have $200,000 in it. Do you, can we, I, I would appreciate some small acknowledgement of the, the stop, the, the realization that we continue to use one-time money to balance our budget. I want to get away with that. I want to get away from that. I'm sure you do too, Ms. Alman, but candidly, we continue to do it year over year. And I'm going to tell you, this chamber's going to be packed with people next year if we have to lay off police and fire, if we can't afford to pay for diamond. We might get through this budget fine, but what are we all going to be saying next year when there's not a seat to be had in this building and we're all getting phone calls because tough decisions need to be made? That's what I'm trying to say here. Nobody wants to talk about this right now because it's easy. Nobody's paying attention. Let's just get it, just get the thing passed. But I want to look a little deeper because tough decisions need to be made, and I know you know it because you've acknowledged it on more than one occasion. So what do we do? There's nothing to do other than the council or the administration send a new appropriation order down or reduce the budget if we can to stop using one-time money. I'm going to, if we, if we approve the budget, fine, approve it. Do whatever you want to do, okay? But I'm just going to tell you, I will remind you all next year, when this chamber is packed with people, and what are we going to do? How can, what are we going to cut? Because what happens year over year, and my colleagues who have been here a very long time can tell you and attest to this, is that they, they put the city council every year when tough decisions need to be made in a corner. Well, councilors, if you don't approve this, I'm not saying this administration has done it because you haven't been put in this situation before, but prior administrations, looking back at history, it's councilors, well, if you don't pass this budget, you're going to have to lay off police officers and firefighters. Those, that's, that's the reality of where we were and where we are today. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions?
Can I just, point of information?
Counselor C1.
So my colleague keeps talking about the reserve fund. What, what page is the reserve fund on?
It is under, there's no point of information, Mr. President, if I may answer his question.
Sure.
But there's no actual tab for it. It's the appropriation order on page seven.
Okay. So I, I guess, I guess my question, I just need clarification because, because I know the CFO has mentioned, we cannot do a line item for the reserve, which I agree with, but I don't know through you, Mr. President, to my colleague in seat six, I don't, I don't think he's looking to break out the reserve account, right? I think the reserve account is for a one-day rainy day, unexpected expenses.
No, I, I, I will intend to make a motion to reduce the reserve account.
Reduce it by 200,000.
To 200,000.
But that's, that's the difference. He's not looking to actually break out buckets to say, you know, $100,000 for negotiations. It's a lump sum.
That's right.
Okay.
We can't do.
No, no, I, I recognize that. I guess I was getting confused with the statements that Bridget was making in terms of we can't itemize it.
Gotcha.
That's.
So I, we were asked, like specifically, what was meaning it all.
In there.
Yes.
Okay.
So I do want to address that. So we do have collective bargaining. We also have negotiations ongoing regarding recycling costs to dispose of. I think what else would have been going on?
So yeah, so, so there's at least three contracts with different vendors who are part of the municipal solid waste and recycling process that we have in place, that we are working on either trying to renegotiate or possibly negotiate for the first time if we're moving to a different vendor. Some, at least one of those expiring this year, the biggest one expiring in two years, but there is at least even an effort to look at that. So there's the possibility that there needs to be funds available to do that. Again, the reserve fund is all about possibility as opposed to certainty. But certainty would be in the budget as a line item. In addition to that, when we started this, and frankly, still without a, um, without a collective bargaining agreement agreed upon by the union membership, there was the belief that we could end up with something more than 2%. 2% was put in there as a conservative estimate. But the reserve fund would be used if it ends up being more than 2%. In addition to that, if there are certain sections, whether regardless of, of union or non-union for that matter, if there are certain sections that need to be brought up in order to recruit and retain people in the event of, of an emergency, and we've seen that. I think a really good example is last year, the water department found it impossible to hire people. They had five to seven to eight vacancies at a time. There was a revision that came before the council. As part of that enterprise fund, I know it's not part of this budget, but there was a revision to those wages. Same thing with the parks. There was a revision to the park wages. Some of those things happen off-contract because we can't wait six months to be able to bring people in. I'm not saying any of those things I know for a fact are going to happen or that I can put an exact dollar amount. But to have only 200,000 on that is, um, is concerning. In addition, with our uniform services, that's where the potential buyouts can be significant. Now, you've seen in those budgets, there are some areas, there are some buyout numbers that are budgeted here and there for anticipated retirements. But there's always the possibility you have retirements you did not anticipate. You've all heard the fire chief come before you, the police chief come before you and say, we think we have this many retirements. We think we're going to lose this many people. And sometimes it's less and sometimes it's more. And the problem there is there's a domino effect, right? You, you, you pay that person out for their accrued time and they have a, they have an accrued time scenario that's, that's often much more robust, has a much greater dollar amount attached to it than, um, a normal city employee. Not to say city employees can't accrue significant vacation and sick time and get paid out for that. And we can't always budget for that because we don't know when they're leaving. We try. We try very hard to identify people that might be retiring. And here's the thing, once that happens, there's a domino effect. You have a number of, of officers, number of firefighters, whatever, that all get promoted up and now you have an open slot and you have to hire. So there is, there needs to be monies available for that. To reduce that down to 200,000 basically ties our hands. I would argue respectfully that more than tying our hands, it really, and, and I would say this is the case also when it comes to the salary line items that we talked about before. This really intrudes into the executive function. The executive function is to set salaries and give wages and give, you know, raises if necessary or if appropriate. And to essentially defund our ability to do that, I would argue moves this council from a body that is, has purpose for appropriation to one that is, is now attempting to usurp the ability of the executive branch, not intentionally, but it certainly is the effect. And I would argue that that's really inappropriate and that really kind of shakes the, the very foundation of, of the democracy. Thank you.
Counselor C1, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I, I hear what you're saying in terms of being handcuffed. I, I guess, I'm trying to find a happy medium in terms of what my colleague is requesting, right? So he's, he's, he's looking to, he, he, which rightfully so, the use of one-time money is, and I, and I hear what you're saying. I guess actually, let me, let me back up. So on page seven, we've got the use of the 2.3 million dollars is, is being utilized through free cash. Is that free cash, is that FY 23 free cash or is that going to be the FY 24 assumed?
It's the 23 cash that was certified for 24.
All right. So free cash that's currently in hand.
Correct.
So what is stopping us from just taking the 2.3 million dollars from free cash, making an appropriation to stabilization account? We have the money and based on those assumptions, knowing full well that those types of things may arise and that we have to give you the flexibility to be able to, number one, negotiate with unions, deal with the recycling contracts, things of that nature. At tho, at that point, based on, again, the budget being a live-in document, coming back before us for an appropriation. The only difference is, is that we, either we approve it now and it's a simple majority or obviously coming out of stabilization is just going to require a two-thirds, right? So the, the threshold in terms of an approval coming out is a little bit higher. But outside of that, if, if we're committed to saying that, okay, we're, we're not building a budget with one-time monies here, but if you need it, let's come back. We, we tap into the reserve accounts. I don't know where the votes are going to go, but as it currently stands, the 800,000, that's, that's in here, 846,512. And then once that's zeroed out, then we make a transfer from the stabilization account that you would typically come down before us anyways. And then I understand the flexibility. I, I, I understand you want to be able to have that flexibility with regards to, you know, either just making internal transfers without having to come down to the council. You know, if, if we were, if we were a town, I, I think I might be pushing back on this a little bit more because you only have town meeting, depending on which community, have either once or twice, twice a year. We meet every, at least twice, twice a month, so that the ability to be able to make those transfers are, are pretty quick. So i, is there, is there any, I guess, room to be able to kind of reduce the 2.3 and, and live with the appropriation coming back down to the council and getting that appropriated to the stabilization account?
I don't think that, I mean, this is, again, we're transitioning from, I mean, you know where the city was before COVID. And we're transitioning now away from COVID. And we feel, and I feel this is a bridge. I mean, we feel we put forward expenditures that are, you know, we, we spend a lot of time on that and I, I, I stand by it. I, I do think that this is the appropriate budget. I don't think that those assumptions that are, can be made. And again, we feel that this is like bridging us to, you know, it's covering, there's over 800, there's like about 800,000 that's going to cover the diamond interest payment for the short-term ban. We're meeting with Diamond again on Thursday. And I don't, I just, I, I just, I think that doing that would not be, again, what, when, you know, when you go through all these, you spend years of budgeting and what's best practice. What we put forward, we feel is, is, you know, a good, solid, conservative budget.
So I, I think that the flexibility, like you said, that's really the key to the whole thing. Because, because ideally, what you just said, which is, well, you know, we meet every two weeks, you know, this should happen quickly. If, if that, if that is in fact what happens, you know, probably not a big deal. But I think we all know that, you know, once, you know, an issue like this goes before the council, there's always the possibility for something to be, you know, politicized or, or, you know, there's, you know, certain, there's personal taste that get involved there. And, you know, all of a sudden, something that, that, you know, needs to happen, arguably, that should only take a couple of weeks, all of a sudden, you know, there's an objection or it gets, you know, sent to a committee and, and all of a sudden we're off to the races a couple of months later. You know, really putting, you know, significant operations and, and, and other needs at risk. That's my concern. I, I think there's a reason why the things that this council throughout the year, you know, has oversight over, direct oversight and must approve are prescribed in ordinance and in the charter. And there's other things that the administration has the ability to do within the budget are also prescribed in the charter. I think there's a reason why those things need to balance each other out. And that's my, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I, listen, I, I, I'm on both sides, right? So I, I, I rec, I recognize the flexibility that you want from, as an administrator, as the administration. And, and I think you should, should have that flexibility, right? Because you got to be able to run the day-to-day. I, I, I understand that. I think it just comes down to the philosophical approach when it comes to putting together, and, and I, and I think you would all agree, this budget that, you know, eliminating the use of one-time money is only going to strengthen our financial position, right? We had this conversation with the water and sewer department. You know, the rates were going high. We pivoted a little bit away from the argument we're making now about eliminating the one-time money and, and we included retained earnings in there to minimize the impact to the rate pairs. We were having those conversations for years, saying that if we're not going to consistently go up on the rates, that at some point we were going to get to the point that we were at now and that we were going to have significant impacts to the rate pairs. So we've seen that. I guess what I would, what I would urge, and I've, I've said this before, is we're not, as a legislative body, responsible for putting policies together. That's, that's you folks. I've asked this administration, not with you here, but a fire, the, the previous finance director in terms of finance policy, uh, financial policies, putting together an, an actual written document together so that as a city council, when we're going through this budget process, we can go through the financial policies and we can look. At least from our standpoint, the most important financial policies for us are going to be your stabilization accounts, right? Your employer trust fund, so that we can all come to an agreement as to the minimum balance, right? So that we're not having this conversation back and forth in terms of whether or not we want to reduce the employer account because we know what the minimum balance needs to be and we've all essentially agreed on that. So I would just ask for some insight to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what those balances look like. So I would, I would urge the administration to try to put something together. And I'm not suggesting that you come together with a, you know, a hundred-page financial document, but I would, I would suggest that, at least from a city council standpoint, if we can get these stabilization accounts, the trust funds, revolving accounts or whatever it may be, a policy surrounding that, so that when we're having these budget deliberations or any financial deliberation moving forward, that we can point to something. And so we're not having this back and forth.
Yeah, you, so you're looking, and I was a little surprised that there was not any here yet. You're looking for like a fund balance policy.
Right. So, you know, stabilization, a general stabilization account would be that a minimum balance would be 3% of, and I'm just throwing out a number that would.
Yeah, that's low.
That, that's high. I, I, I recognize that.
No, that's low. 3%.
Then I, I, no, I, I know it's low. It's usually 5%, 10%.
7%.
Yeah. So I, I recognize that. But in terms of where we stand from a financial standpoint, even 3% is gonna, is gonna be significant, right? So that's going to be, you know, two, three, four million dollars or whatever the case may be. I'm, I'm just throwing out a percentage. I don't, that's for you folks to make that determination as to what it is. But I think we should have some input to see, you know, yes, we're in agreement with that. So we're not arguing on the floor in terms of where this money is going to come from. Let's reduce this. It's just going to make things a little bit easier. So with that, I, I just got to give us some thought in terms of how I'm going to proceed if a motion is made with regard to the, obviously, the reserve fund, the use of one-time monies and then the health insurance as well.
Could I just make one more comment?
Thank you.
So I just want to notate that, I mean, the last, this administration has, we're not just spending all of our expenditures just to spend the budget. We are very methodical. We are very conservative and we hold people accountable. And so that's why there's, I mean, the turnbacks are not just from, have not been just from salaries, but they are from also expenditures because we are very cautious about what we spend and we are trying to, to do the right thing. And so I think that's important to notate.
Thank you. You, did you floor right?
I did yield.
So I just want to point out one thing, as Counselor didn't mention, I don't know how many councils, and I forgot about this. But when, if we were to transfer from the stabilization account, it's not just a majority vote, it's a two-thirds vote, which makes it more challenging and it raises the bar. Just make sure people understand that. If we go down that road and later on had to supplement the budget and take from that account, it's not as simple as a majority vote. It's a two-thirds vote, which just makes it a bit more difficult. Counselor C6, Councilor.
Mr. Aiken, when the city council, when you closed your collective bargaining with the police and fire, this current fiscal year that we're in now, where did the transfer come from? What account?
It depends.
I can answer that.
Yeah, it's not all the same.
So we actually, because of the timing of free cash, we transferred it out of stabilization, but then we put it right back in as soon as we had free cash certified.
Right. So you were, that was the free cash from 2023?
The free, yeah, we should put it back in.
From fiscal year 23 that you got in 24?
Yes.
So you, it, it isn't the first time that if a council has a need to move money out of stabilization for the purposes of high insurance claims, for example, whatever it is, it wouldn't be the first time it happened. It wouldn't be the first time a collective bargaining unit negotiated and we didn't have money set, reserved in the budget. I don't want to say the word hidden, but reserved in the budget. Like, this isn't, it wouldn't be the first time. This is, this isn't like we're starting something new here.
So again, it's still, still, it still would not be a best practice. I mean, what you're suggesting is to put this budget so below what we're saying we need to, to run the city and to pay the expenditures. And I just, I, I, I don't understand why you'd want to put it.
Because I don't want to use free cash anymore to balance budgets. I don't want to use one-time money to balance our budgets anymore. That's why.
And so, and I, again, when you're using one-time money, but then if you actually run the, the legal deficit that you're allowing us to do, then I would agree with you. But we have not actually run a deficit. We've actually not ended up having to use that free cash because we were able to not.
What makes you think this transfer, uh, reduction of, call it a million dollars or 1.6 million dollars is going to make the city run in a deficit? When you're going to have five to six million dollars in your employer trust account, even if we do this? How are you going to be running at a deficit?
I don't know where you're assuming that we're going to have five to six million in that account.
Well, it's, 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 it's basic math based on your.
You can't do it like that because it's a, this, it's not evenly done throughout the year.
Well, I could, I can make that argument too by saying, when I asked you earlier in the budget process, right? Where did you come up with your number for new growth? You said to me that you are going to be taking the last three fiscal years of new growth and taking the average that was the year number.
We looked, we looked at, we looked at what caused the new growth and we looked at the, the last five years. And the majority of new growth was, three years ago, you went to 18 months, you changed the, the assessment process period. I don't know if that was 21 or 20, for 20, it was either for 21 or for 22, it was before I got here.
Yep.
So that's what you, you, you're allowed to do that one time.
Right.
That was done. And then the rest of the significant growth came from utility companies. So that's personal property that then depreciates faster. So again, your, it's, did not all just happen in, in the same categories of new growth. And unfortunately, we had our ass, the assessor down here and was ready to speak about that. It just wasn't asked. So again, we, we went over that with our, um, the chairman of our assessor who has, I think everybody here knows Mr. Gonzalez, who's got, I, I don't know, 40 years of experience. And our ci, and our city assessor, who's very experienced. And that's the number that we felt comfortable, you know, budgeting.
I'll yield for now. If we can go through, Mr. President, if nobody else has a chance to speak, the, starting from general government working down. And then I'll make a motion where I see fit. If my colleagues support it, great. If not, it's fine. Whatever. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Do I have a question about the reserve fund? We heard a lot that the reserve fund was 2%, the AFME contracts coming down. We don't know it. It's 2%, 2%, 2%. So if we look at the AFME contracts and we add them up, just those 2% of those employees in the, we're looking at 150,000, give or take 100,000 for, um, the increase in salaries that were not given, but they're in the budget just in case so we could go up. That's 250. So I do feel that if we give and take a little, that a 250 in that reserve account is not that bad of a deal. I mean, especially if we have, if you have to come back and there was a problem, then we could go, um, through the stabilization fund. So I, I think to say that we're handcuffing you is a little bit unfair. A reduction here is a direct savings to the taxpayers.
Excuse me, Counselors. Counselor C1 has the floor. Can we please, if you have a conversation, just please.
It's a, it is a direct savings to the taxpayers. So to say that we need this budget at this rate because we like the flexibility, your flexibility is actually going to cost the taxpayers money. Let me just finish my view on this. If we can, um, cut back a little bit, and this reserve fund for the, because of what we were, what I was hearing was that we have this 2% that could come down for these AFME contracts. But if we do the math, those, it's only about 150 and that's, um, on the high end. And if we, and I'm giving 100,000 just for those other reasons that may not be given, but could be going up. So that is another 100. That's 250. So I do think we're not far off by saying that 200,000, 250, um, is there and that 846 could be a little padded in that that could be a direct savings to our public. And so, you know, I, I do want to, um, say that, saying that we're handcuffing you by that and that's not, it's just, I feel is just not a fair statement and that we could be quite all right with 250,000 in that reserve, reserve fund. And, um, there is money if there was, you know, a problem down the road, but, but I have to agree that it, that could be a little bit padded. So that's my take on it. With that, I yield.
Can I respond?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, assuming that that's going to be a sa, a direct savings to the taxpayers, it doesn't work that way? Because that, that's making the assumption that you're reducing the tax levy. So reducing the budget doesn't, doesn't equate to a direct savings to the taxpayers. It's just not the way it works. I, I mean.
Thank you, Counselor C4.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Seth, do you want to make?
Yeah, just, just briefly. So, you know, um, we certainly disagreed in the past.
Yeah. And we can.
And we can.
As you say.
And, uh, so I, I do, I do have to say I kind of stand by the, the handcuffing metaphor.
Yeah.
And, uh, and the reason I do is, you know, this is, what we're doing here is, is really just a massive version of what people across the city are trying to do in their own homes, you know, every year, every month, every week, which is, you know, trying to create a budget that they can live within and that can do the things they need to do. And the idea of doing that without any kind of safety net, without any kind of ability to absorb surprises. Sometimes there, there's folks out there that have to do that, right? But that is a terrible way to live. That is a dangerous way to live, right? Not being able to absorb the unexpected things that happen in life. And the idea of, of having this, um, this 875,000 to be able to absorb the unexpected things without taking away from other things is, you know, I, I would argue it's not, it's not irresponsible. It's not padding. It's, it's actually the opposite. It's, it's responsible because it, it means that we can try to live within our means regardless of what happens. I do try to approach every day as if I'm going to be fine, as if nothing bad's going to happen. But here I am. No, I'm just kidding. Um, no, and, but, and, and, and for the, thank you. Thank you, CEO. This is really, between the handcuffing and the shanking, this is really, this is taking a turn. My, my former life is coming out here. No, and I, I apologize for digressing. All, all I'm trying to say is that, um, the, the idea that there is that little bit of extra that, I agree, you know, doesn't have a bunch of specific line items saying, this is how we're going to spend it. But it is the, it is the thing that if you are able to do it, you want to do so you can absorb the unexpected things that happen in life. And if there was ever a place where life happens, it's right here. Things un, unexpected happen and, and we, we try our very best to be able to deal with it.
So I, I will go with your statement you say all the time, reasonable people can disagree. And you are very reasonable and we can disagree here. That I feel that that number is padded and it's high. And that is, you're not going to change my view on that. And I, and I think that right there is where, um, we may be able to have a, a direct savings. So with that.
So I, can I just make one more say? I mean, it's, the state itself has not even finalized their budget. And again, I mean, we also get, you know, our, there's numbers from the state in our char, our cherry sheet that change through the whole year. Charter school money. So I just want to, I mean, you know, it's, this is not like abnormal and what we've, I still feel that we did a, you know, put something in place that's best practice.
Do you, Counselor?
I do, Council President. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor C4, Counselor.
Yes, I was, um, I mistaken, um, I had my hand raised before you spoke, but you took the words out of my mouth. So I, I don't think it's a, a bad budget practice to use one-time money as a cushion just in case of an emergency. Because that's what we're talking about here, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's just a safety net, a just-in-case safety net, and especially the health insurance fund. fund.
Yeah.
One thing I did learn over all these years, and I'm not a financial expert, is that, that's, that's, you don't touch that. So, in terms of your comment, I did mention to you last night that I do have office space available.
I'm doing fine. 55 Highland Avenue. I'm glad to be here.
Okay.
I'm doing, thank you, Councilor, I appreciate it.
My point, my thought process, it's, it's not a real bad budget, it's a good budget practice. So it's not, it's, it's one-time money that's not being spent and utilized, it's used as a safety net.
And that's the point.
For a very important line item.
Yes.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Maybe no further questions?
Actually, Mr. Council President, will there be an opportunity to, for those of us at the table to discuss any of the line items as they come up? Or should we, should we have that conversation now about anything that might be? Because there's something that Councilor Pott brought up that I'd like to address if I can, but it may, this may not be the time, I just wanted to ask.
I'm not, I'm not sure how the council wants to do this. Usually we don't have the administration down at the table while we're doing line items. And if there's something that you want, if you people wanted to talk about now, whatever you're looking to do, and see if they want to address any questions, or is everyone comfortable and you don't need any further questions, any clarifications, or?
I'd like to make a motion that the administration stay here through the appropriation, in case councilors have questions.
Okay.
Motion made.
Is that okay with, Seth, is that okay with you and Bridget, just to stay here while we do the appropriations count, in case you want to address something, you can?
I have nowhere to be. I truly, truly have nowhere to be, so, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
I will state this, at 10 o'clock, we are going to end this meeting, and if we go beyond 10 o'clock, we'll be back here tomorrow. Just your note.
Okay.
Councilor C. two, Councilor D. on?
Before we start, I have one question. We do need to approve the appropriation from the law department that was given to us tonight?
We need to.
The new page.
Yeah, so, just so we don't forget that because of the, because money was transferred?
But the, the bottom amount, the amount is the same.
Yeah, yeah, we get the new page. So we didn't, we didn't add to the appropriation, but last night they had to move money, so we need to, not to, we need to remember to vote, to approve that, correct?
The, the whole page was changed.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to go back.
You have a new page.
Yeah. So when we start, just so we don't forget to do that, that's all I'm doing, is trying to remind, remind everybody that we need to do that, because it's a whole brand new page.
The amount is the same though.
Okay. You're the council, make the motion.
That I yield?
That's very great.
Any questions, any who want to start the?
Yes.
Go with A. one.
General Government.
Allison, do you want to, do you need to clarify that as far as the appropriation? Do we need to approve it first?
We have the one, that's all we passed.
What?
We have been approved.
But do we need to approve that new order, appropriation order, or is it still in the same total?
It's the same.
So we don't need to approve it?
Second.
Councilor, to clarify, we don't need to prove what you just spoke about, the law department, because it's the same total, we have the appropriation, they just changed it within their own budget, but the amount didn't change. So there is no need to approve what you, the law department, that was changed today.
Okay.
You already have that. Just want to clarify and make sure that everybody's on the right page, everybody knows what we're doing.
I agree.
It gets a little tricky. I'm all ears, councilors.
Mr. President, if the clerk could read the appropriation order, we can go by?
Madam Clerk, do you want to just begin, and you can pretty much go down the first order in sequence, and we'll make whatever changes at that time? If there were any.
Mr. President, if nobody has any questions for A. one through 10, can we take those together, or B. one, two, three?
Whatever the word, Council, Council, make a motion.
I mean, if there's, there's ones that people have a concern about, then fine, we'll spend time on that.
Is your motion to take items?
Council President, my motion would be that we take each category individually, so category A.
Category A.
We take a vote on that, will be A. one through 10, if there's any discussion or changes, then we address that, and then we just move on to?
Very good.
Subject B.
Absolutely.
Works for me. Motion to take items in each category. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Okay, so we would have A. one through 10, total amount being $4,100,936.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to approve would be appropriate, right?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Do we need, we don't need roll calls on this, do we, Madam Clerk?
Think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
B. one through three, would, for the purposes of administration, would be $5,111,289.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, under motion to approve, Councilor C. two, Councilor D. on?
Yes, under administrative salaries, I would like to, page 113, the purchasing agent. I don't think there are any of us that disagree that we need a purchasing agent. I think we all believe we need that, we should have one on board.
Point of information, I believe this is under financial services, we still, is the motion before us for administration?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
This is administrative services.
I dropped the gun, you're right.
You yield, Councilor?
Did I yield?
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt. I, B. one through three, for the amount that the clerk read, $5,111,289, has been, motion to approve has been made and seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Who, who made them?
I made the motion.
Second.
I knew it was, Councilor Kadeem made the motion. We can do it again, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Want to do it one more time, just to get it straight?
Nah.
Good.
C. one and two, for the purpose of financial services, total amount being $2,329,422.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, under motion, Councilor C. two, Councilor D. on?
Thank you. So, purchasing agent, as I said, I think we all agree, we need a purchasing agent. In light of what's happened in this past year, we went through ordinance, creating a position, we were told monies were going to be taken from that line item to finance the new position along with the assistant auditor, that didn't happen. We had a long discussion, we were told you haven't decided what you're doing, you don't know when you're going to do something, but you're, you're, you're learning and, and figuring things out, and how are you going to proceed? I personally would like to reduce, I would like to make, have that be a unfunded salary item, reduce it by the 75,000, not to eliminate the position, but once more as a marker and more for accountability, so that when you do finally decide what you're doing, how are you doing it, if it's a full-timer, a part-timer, who's doing it, that you will come before the council, explain to us what we're finally doing with the purchasing agent, put in the request for the transfer, and at that point in time, we would fund the position. And that's my motion, to reduce, and that's the reason why I would like to reduce that.
May I speak to that briefly?
Absolutely.
So, at some point early on, Counselor Kilby said, you know, hey, can you try to take into account some of the, the thing, the feedback that we give as you move forward? And I, that was a point well taken, and maybe most of all, the, the point, most importantly well taken, is there's an agreement that we need a purchasing agent, and that I really seriously miscalculated our ability to do that by committee, basically. And so, in addition was, additional conversation about the reorg in facilities, city operations, you know, parks, city, cemetery, trees. So what I, just, just as a preview of coming attractions, what I intend to do in the next several weeks is introduce, for this council's consideration, both that reorg as well as some treatment of the purchasing agent, in reflection of what I've heard from the council, as a, an assessment of what the need is in the city. So, just an FYI, I take that very seriously, and you'll be hearing from the administration soon.
Very good.
Okay. And I appreciate that, um, I appreciate that, but I can also remember when we were talking about solid waste, and there was a meeting at the table, ordinance, I wasn't in ordinance then, I was in the audience, and at that time, the ordinance committee was told, in about two weeks, we're going to come down with some more information about the solid waste and changes we were making, and that was months ago, and it hasn't happened.
Well, I think it was with regard to commercial.
Excuse me?
It was with regard to the commercial trash?
No, it was beyond that, that you announced.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, hold on, we are not going to get back into forth in conversations like this, because there's still 24.
Okay, the point is?
Hold on one second, please, I'm going to finish. There's still 24 items on the regular city council meeting, and we were asked them to come down to answer specific questions with dollar amounts. We're not going to go back and forth into this kind of conversation, because these are hypotheticals, might happen, might not, explanations of what they're looking to do. So if the council wants to make the motion, the councilors will vote under motion yes or no, and if there's something said that is saying that is totally wrong, then you can give your input into that, and if needed, but to say, every time someone makes a motion to reduce something, for you to come up with an explanation of why it shouldn't be reduced, we're going to be here an awful long time, and it's probably not necessary.
So my motion is to reduce that by 75,000.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Councilor C. one, under motion?
Mr. President, I, I appreciate your statements, but I, I think, I for one just need to understand where my colleague in C. two is coming from, because I don't know.
I think she said it, she, I think she spoke on why she made the motion.
She, she, I guess she did, but then there was some back and forth, but I'm, I'm still, I guess I still wasn't following, so we can still have discussion on why she's, are you suggesting we can't have discussion?
No, no, we can have discussion, but I don't want to get into long, drawn-out explanations as to why this might happen.
Right, keep it to the point.
Exactly.
Okay.
To the point. If a council says, we're going to have $50 million left over after we do this, and it's not true, I think the administration should say, excuse me, where did you get that number from? I don't think they should say, well, this is what we're looking to do going forward six months from now, because now we'll be here, I mean, that's what we do throughout the year, we don't have to have that discussion right now. We're on the budget, line items, we're going down each number, if there's a discrepancy in the dollar amount, or discrepancy in something that's not being accurate, they can clarify that.
And, and, and I appreciate that, and I, and I want, first of all, I want to apologize, because I was sick.
No, you're the council.
I was sick yesterday, so I missed some of the conversation, and then Wednesday, I had a, a meeting in, in C. con, so I apologize if I missed the discussion, I'm just, I guess I'm confused or not following, or up to speed, whatever, however you want to define it.
Well, I think the discussion she did, she explained just before she's mentioned.
But I, I, I didn't follow it, though, I guess is where I was going.
You want to do it again, that's fine.
If, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all, no, that type of explanation, why she's doing it, it's fine.
Right.
I just don't want to have the back and forth, over, over, and over. She made the statement, he explained what he was doing, now we're going to go back and forth, over and over? That's not.
Yeah, I, I was just confused by the reorg and what's going on with the purchasing agent, so I'm not sure what's going on with the purchasing agent.
I understand, Council, and I, and I do respect that.
So this is based on, in ordinance, they wanted a new position, they were going to use funding from the purchasing agent to fund that position. That didn't happen. Instead, the purchasing agent's salary went up 13,000, and we, and the new position happened, it's funded. We were told that, they didn't realize then that we really were, were going to need a purchasing agent, and we had a lot of conversation in ordinance, on the, on the council. So my, so in, in my opinion, it's the ifs, the maybes, we're talking about it, it's going to happen, I would rather put that at a, an unfunded position, that when they do make the decision for accountability, because we don't want the maybes, and then it's a different story, for accountability purposes, when they're ready, they determine what the position's going to be, they ask for the transfer, this is the dollar amount, this is what we're doing, this is how we're handling it, at that point, we can just approve the transfer, and the position will be funded. I don't want to fund it with all these questions in the air and not knowing what's going to happen. So that's why I'm saying I want to reduce it by the 75,000. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Seth and Bridget, you do understand what I'm trying to say, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You feel that you need to chime in, please let us know, but other than that, thank you.
I feel that way almost all the time, but I'll try to refrain.
I, I understand. Motion has been made and seconded?
Just as a point of order, Mr. President, is it, is it clear that the motion is to reduce the financial services salaries to an amount of $1,702,192? And then the bottom number that currently shows $2,329,422 to $2,254,422?
Yes.
And it's clear, Councilor.
I just want to make it clear.
The clerk, the clerk has it noted that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilor, good question.
Roll call.
Motion has been made and seconded, roll call.
On the motion, Councilors Kadeem?
No.
D. on?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
No.
Reposo?
No.
Sampson?
No.
President Kamara?
No. Motion fails. There a motion?
Motion to adopt, C. for financial service, motion to approve, C. for financial services?
Second.
The amount of $2,329,422.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under motion, sorry, under motion, Councilor C. two, Councilor D.?
No, I am opposed.
C. two opposed. Do you know it, Councilor? Madam Clerk?
Allison. D.
Facility maintenance?
D. one through four would be for the purpose of facilities maintenance, total amount being $3,803,89.
To approve?
Seconded.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, under motion to approve, Councilor C. two. Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Under motion to approve, Councillor C2.
Let's see. I'm gonna start with on facilities expenses. On page 139. So, the electric in facilities is budgeted at 250,000 dollars. In the FY24 third quarter budget, they only used 37% of that budgeted amount. So, as a result of that, I would like to reduce that budget by 60,000, put, to bring it down to 190,000 because I don't see that they're ever gonna use 75, or close to, I mean, 63% in one quarter. So, that's my motion, to reduce the budget for electricity by 60,000 dollars because that's still less, that's reducing it by still less than 25%.
Thank you, councillor. You?
I do.
Is there a second under motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded? Roll call.
Roll call.
Point of information, just so we're clear, Mr. President, I want to make sure that we're talking about facilities expenses and we're just reducing it by 60,000 dollars.
That's what the clerk has noted, exactly where the councillor's motion is.
Just want to make it clear, this is very important.
Can I just?
Councillor C1, councillor Kadeem?
Can I just get, is there a reason why we're so undefunded? Well, I guess the expenses are not where they are.
I believe you may have been here when they did the Amaresco solar project. So right now, the credits are all going to that account and we've had a lot of difficulties with that whole Amaresco. So right now, the credits went to that account and that's, we're working on trying to get an actual refund check for that. So it's unfortunately not the way it accurately reflects the true electricity cost.
So I guess will we still be getting credits? So is, are we able to reduce the 60,000?
I'm not, so there, there's a whole other reconciliation that they're working on with the solar. I believe Al, so Director Al Olivera did review that. He was prepared to discuss that. I don't have that with me.
Okay.
So the yield, the yield of the solar farm over the past five years has increasingly reduced, or has decreased, I guess, over, because transformers have gone out one after another. But there has been an offset, and there was a delay in the credits for that. So basically, nobody was tracking and no one really knew because there was no continuity with the folks that put the solar in place. There was no knowledge that the credits were offsetting what our budget was for electric in the fire system. They apparently knew about it in facilities and actually went toward it a couple of weeks ago. They're replacing all the transformers, they'll be up to 100% effectiveness within the next three months, but they'll be completely offline for three months, so we're gonna see a total reduction in credits. It's just, it's a little bit of a convoluted thing, so I can't say for sure what the real offset is.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded?
Yeah, I just, I have three other items I want to reduce, but they're in salary, not in expenses, so you want to keep them separate?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll do this one first.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded? Roll call. This is to reduce, you have the dollar amount, Madam Clerk?
This would be to reduce the facilities expense line item, which is 2,618,340 by 60,000 dollars.
Correct. Which will reduce the three, okay, good, that's fine. We can do the totals after. Roll call.
Councillor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Motion, Mr. President, motion to reduce the general fund facilities salaries by 15,000 dollars as well as 13,050 dollars. And then I'll, I'll speak on that motion after I get acknowledged on it.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded? Under motion, Councillor C6, councillor Ponti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So under facilities salaries, I'd like to turn my colleague's attention to page...
141?
Yep, there it is. Page 141. So I took exception, as I mentioned before, on, again, this isn't about the person who I think very fondly of. The Director of Operations has in the, or the administration put in the budget 155,000 dollars for salaries. However, in contract, it's 140,000 dollars. I don't really feel like giving 15,000 dollars of a raise or wiggle room to do a raise. In addition to that, my other motion is for the clerk to receive an on-call stipend of 13,050 dollars. I just don't feel that that's appropriate. So my motion is to reduce the facilities salaries by 28,050 dollars altogether when you take both of them, resulting in the facilities salaries now being 1,156,699.
May I speak on this?
Yeah, one second.
I yield.
You yield, thank you. Councillor C2, do you want to chime in as well?
Yes, please. So I have a third salary item. Should we do all the salary items at once or do them separately?
Absolutely, so they can address them all at the same time.
So I'm gonna speak on the 13,000. Yes, it's, it's a on-call, in the budget...
Councillor, honestly, he already made the motion to reduce about 13,000 and he was...
All right, I was just gonna add to the why it should be reduced. All right, there's two part-time positions on that same page. The security guard part-time and the PM security guard that's wanted. My, my reason for reducing both of those is because neither position has ever gone through ordinance and it's, they've never been approved by the council. So, it, I mean, so the fact that they're not in ordinance and not a positions, I would reduce the salary line item by another 39,539.76 which brings us to a total of 67,589.76 and reduces salaries to 1,117,159.24.
That's an amendment.
Do you yield, councillor?
I do.
Councillor C5, councillor Srampero?
Well, I personally feel having those two individuals here from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, and they work part-time, helps when we have people that are coming into City Hall and want direction. We don't have anybody in the telephone booth anymore. If it should go to ordinance, then fine, let's put in something for it to go to ordinance and be put in as an ordinance. But you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. That's not... I mean, we need somebody here to help people. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Aiken, did you want to address any of the comments you made?
Yeah, just very briefly. So I did, speaking about the head administrative clerk. So, understanding that we put that in as an on-call stipend, that was a mistake. I've spoken about that before, I'm not gonna belabor that point. It really is more of a service at a rank. And you can see throughout the budget, in HR, in the auditor's office, in several other offices, in Solid Waste, there are folks that function in a similar kind of higher level capacity, basically somewhere between the highest level clerk but below a manager. And that's what this person started to do several years ago in 2022 when we did the reorg. We had a person serving three purposes, that was reduced to one purpose, purchasing. One of their previous roles had been facilities. When they were taken out of facilities, they refused to do any further facilities work. They refused to pick up any paper that actually had to do with facilities. And there were literally hundreds and hundreds of records that had to do with closing out the Durfee project, Chapter 149, construction contracts, Chapter 30B, other purchasing. And so this clerk, you know, I didn't know her from Adam. You know, just a clerk doing her job. She seemed interested and willing to pick that stuff up, taught herself, and has since, over the last couple of years, become kind of the essential go-to for, from the origination of 149 building projects for both the schools and the city, you know, remodeling, building, the whole thing, soup to nuts, beginning to end, has been an essential asset in that department. And so councillor Dionne and I spoke about this before the meeting. If you actually look in the 24 budget, her salary is, is actually, it's incorrect here. It should be, her annual salary should be listed as something other than what it is. That's in itself a problem, but the 13,050 for a total of 58,659,1 is on par with other people doing similar levels of higher responsibility than a traditional clerk and is certainly on par with the kind of work she's doing, especially with regard to the construction work, the OEM work in the city. I gave everyone a job description. The additional duties are a shortlist, but they're critically important. And I would ask that you consider that when you consider essentially reducing her salary because she has been getting service at a rank prior to this budget. And then finally, Mr. Olivera, the Director of City Operations, he started in January of 2023 for 140,000, that was his contract amount. His contract did not include any set raises. The mayor at that time determined that he wanted to be able to renegotiate that every year. Ordinarily, some small increase is what happens traditionally for any, whether it's an AFSMI, Teamster, police, or a management employee, there is some increase, and it's, it can either be negotiated or set. He received nothing for FY24, and this budget will cover January of '25. So what we're talking about is two potential raises. To wipe out the 15,000 entirely, one, he's not getting 15,000 in raises. But two, is to mean that he has, there is no ability for the city to give him any increase. I would argue that 3% and 3% modest would, is about 8,525 dollars total. To wipe it out entirely means that no increase until January of 2026, which given the amount of work that he's done, I think you've all seen the condition of the building, you've seen the efforts that he's put in, I think would really be a pretty sad statement about how we treat our managers, whether they make more than a lot of folks or not.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Councillor C6 has his hand, you have your hand up, councillor first?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. President.
He had his hand up, councillor.
I hadn't yielded.
Sorry, I'll yield to my colleague in C2.
Oh, I thought she yielded.
I thought you did too. Councillor C2, go ahead.
So, I feel like we're in that back and forth.
We are.
So, I don't consider, so in this 13,000 dollar stipend, I don't consider it out of rank. Number one, in the qualifications, it's a willingness to work overtime hours when required. That's part of it. Performs related work as assigned by Director of Project Manager. Maintains construction contracts and documentation for all change orders. Reviews and processes invoices for facilities maintenance. Creates requisitions and maintains purchase orders for city and state contracts. Maintains construction contracts for accuracy of bills, preparation of bill schedules and payment history. Responsible for the methods and procedures used in performing account maintenance and fiscal reporting functions. Verify bills from suppliers with purchase orders. Apply accounting principles in maintaining financial accounts and records. Prepare summaries of expenditures and balances and appropriation. Ability to utilize COMBI's statewide contract program. And lastly, a knowledge of Massachusetts procurement laws. To me, it sounds like she's doing her job, not out of rank. And this is from Attorney Rumsey. With respect to stipends so called, there is no definition of the term either in the charter or our ordinances. However, if the stipend is a payment to an employee to increase their salary for the same tasks as contained in their job description, it is considered salaries and wages regardless of what it is called and needs to be addressed by ordinance. And that's my argument for reducing that stipend. With that, I yield.
Hey, councillor C6, councillor Ponti, did you have your hand up?
I'm good, thank you. Roll call?
Councillor C1, councillor Kadeem?
I guess just in, in terms of the Director of Operations, his contracts, it was a three-year contract, right?
Yes.
So it was CPI?
Nope. No CPI, no set raises.
So how do you, so upon negotiation, so you just negotiate the, the increase annually?
That was apparently the intent.
So what do we have? The 155 is, what's the percentage?
2.5 on CPI.
So his current salary, is this, is that correct, is that, that's the document you gave us?
140 is his current salary, beginning January 2023. So if you did 5%, 5%, you're probably close to that 15,000, it's 14,000.
So you're looking at 155. So it's a, almost an 11% increase? Is that, is that the intent? Is that?
No. No, there was just no, it was, it was an estimate based upon, you know, not having the information at the time. There, there hadn't been a conversation with the mayor about what his intent was. Normally, that happens between the employee and the mayor on an individual basis.
All right. I think my colleague brings up a good point. I just, you know, from a consistency standpoint, the 3.5% is what you're looking at for a CPI, and I know the CPI index could, the Consumer Price Index could fluctuate higher than the 3.5%, but that's, that's what was budgeted, so. Can I just throw you, Mr. President, to my colleague in C2? So you're, you're looking to eliminate the entire amount going back to the 140? Is that what, is that what the motion was?
Colleague in C6 said the entire amount, it's okay.
The motion was to reduce
15,000 dollars?
15,000 for the director and 13,050 for the stipend.
So, through you to my, to my colleague, was it your intent not to provide a raise in there or?
No, I was, I, if I can now, then.
I'll yield to my colleague.
Councillor C6?
Thank you. I actually listened to Mr. Aiken quite well, and I thought you did a really good job of rearticulating your sentiments about the director position.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I feel at this point, like I would like to amend my motion to include, and I also agree 50% with your definition on the stipend. 50%. I don't think I...
It's not nothing.
You know, it's better than nothing.
I appreciate it.
So I want to revise my motion to reduce the facilities salaries director by 10,000, leaving you 5,000 dollars in this fiscal year to work on. And I will remove my motion to remove, to reduce the stipend. So, to be clear...
That's the 13,000 dollars.
Correct. So to be clear, I'd like to amend my motion to reduce general, for the general fund for facility salaries by 10,000 dollars only.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Why don't we take, we don't need a roll call on the amendment. Motion to amend has been made and seconded? All in favor?
Roll call.
What's that?
There's, there's three motions.
I was, I'm confused, point of information.
We need to clarify the motion. So councillor Ponti had the original motion, which he has just
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn and placed it at 10,000. But councillor Dionne had an additional motion that she was reducing two positions.
That's what I was asking. Can I just ask my colleague in C2 just to withdraw her motion?
Just one motion at a time from now on, correct? Councillor, will you withdraw your motion? For now, for the time being.
Yeah, except I don't, yeah, I don't agree with the stipend, the change in the motion to stipend, but yeah, I'll, I'll do it for now.
Okay, so the motion now that we have, Madam Clerk, is just one motion
To reduce by 10,000.
To reduce by 10,000 dollars, correct.
Roll call.
And it was seconded. We don't need a roll call, do you want a roll call?
I think we should.
Yeah, we want a roll call.
No problem, roll call. Everyone understands the motion, 10,000 dollars.
This is, roll call on the emotion, on the amendment.
On the amendment, to reduce by 10,000 dollars.
Correct.
Councillor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
No.
President Kamara?
Yes.
At least, D1 would be from the general fund for facility salaries in the amount of 1,174,749 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve has been made and seconded? Roll call.
This is with the 10, to be clear, this is with the 10,000 dollar reduction.
Correct.
I don't, point of order, I don't want to be a pain, I don't, I don't.
So now we're gonna let councillor 2 make her motions?
No, no, so I just want to say if, if we vote on that, is she able to then make her motion to reduce it further?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
So, okay, so let's go back then. Are there any other amendments to be made or any reductions to be made to this item one? Councillor C2, councillor Dionne?
So, again, one of those part-time positions does not have an individual in the position. So, you're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. The first position, which there is an individual who I happen to like very much, was originally funded with Opera Funding. I would see no reason why they couldn't continue to fund that with Opera Funding until they went through the proper channels, established the positions, and then requested the transfer for the fun, for the funding. So I still, my motion would be still to reduce that by 39,539.76. And in terms of the stipend, so I pointed out to the city administrator that they gipped this employee in their regular salary.
Councillor, just to be clarified, when you say in terms of stipend, you're talking about the 13,000 dollar stipend for the clerk?
Correct.
Just want to make it clear.
That's where I am now. So her, her salary actually was 4,142.81 under what it should be for this year. So in fairness, I don't want, if we're taking away on this end, she still deserves, she, he, I don't even know who it is, still deserves to get their full pay on the, on the, on the other end. So...
What's your motion, councillor?
My motion is I still believe that the stipend, there should be no stipend. Her salary should be brought to where it should be, there should be no stipend, there is no other person, no other clerk, and there are many clerks who do above and beyond, that don't get stipends. Least of all a 13,000 dollar stipend. So my motion is, my motion is to reduce the stipend completely.
13,000 dollars. We gotta be specific, so the clerk can get it right.
13,050 dollars.
Just can't say we just stipend, no, no example to...
In addition to the 39?
In addition to the 39.
So that would be what, a total of 52,589.76.
I know my math.
That was good.
Councillor C, you yield the floor, councillor 2?
I do, I yield.
Good, thank you. Councillor C1?
Thank you. So can we have a frank conversation? So we have one person that's currently in the security guard position. So if we eliminate that, I guess hypothetically, because it's a hypothetical, hypothetically, the individual would not be paid.
That's correct.
And therefore would leave. Or quit, right, unless they want to work for free. I understand my colleague's statement in terms of we're putting a position that's not in ordinance and then the argument is what comes first, but obviously the individual is already in that position through Opera Money. My question to you, though, is that there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 vacancies, so two electricians, one plumber, two carpenters that are funded, right? So you're gonna be looking to hire that position, those positions, right? So...
Well, we're gonna be looking to bargain with the union to see if we can maybe change that allotment. The council...
But that's fine. I guess, so I guess let me, let me rephrase my, my question. So there is money that has been allocated for those positions. Now how that breaks out after negotiations may change.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that being said, so if we eliminate the, would you say 59? 59,000 and then the 13,000?
39,000. Thirty-nine thousand, thirteen, fifty-two thousand.
I'm sorry, thirty-nine, thirty, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, thirteen.
Yep, thirty-nine, five thirty-nine, seventy-six, and then the thirteen fifty. Depending on, depending on when you hire, you still have enough funds to, one, pay the stipend, because as a legislative body, we do not have the authority to tell you not to pay a stipend, and two, still pay the security guard, technically, or hypothetically.
Technically, but I think, um, and, and that's fine.
Right timing, because those are vacant, I mean, if all the positions were filled, then we would be having a different conversation, but I just want to have a frank conversation that I, I know the motion that's before us, it may not necessarily pan out the way that my colleague in seat two sees, or thinks that it's gonna pan out.
Sure, um, but, but, you know, that, our, our intent is never to try to circumvent the will of the council, truly, I know people are gonna laugh at that and say, you know, well, it's not, um, but very truly, I want to be able to go to the union with those five positions and say, hey, what can we do with these to put them at a rate, because this would also affect some positions that are filled, put them at a rate where we can actually hire and retain people, uh, good people, electricians with licenses, um, you know, all, all of the things that come with that, and I would not want to chip away at those positions, um, you know, not to say we, we couldn't use that money, but I wouldn't want to chip away at the money set aside for those positions by doing that, when we, we do desperately need to be able to bring some of the stuff in-house, to be able to be sustainable. Uh, so that's just, that's a future thing, it's speculative, but it is something that we're gonna be doing forthwith, we've already actually started that conversation. But it does have to be bargained.
Okay. You're a better man than I, I would say, reduce, I'm still paying people, that's what I would, that's what I would do.
Or you have to.
Right, so I, I just want to make it clear that, again, we don't have line item authority, it's just an overall salaries and expenses, go ahead.
The point you're trying to make is, although that's the intent that the counselor wants, that's not necessarily what will happen.
Right.
In fruition, yeah, exactly.
Because I would, I would assume that you would then come back to, or, down, or submit something for ordinance to, to get a security guard in, into ordinance, I would assume, or maybe not.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's critically important.
Okay.
It, it's not a, you know, a rough-and-tumble bouncer, it's somebody that makes sure that nobody's overdosing in the bathrooms, it, it's so important on that first floor, uh, it's a big deal.
All right, so the answer to the question is yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, the second part, and I think this is the biggest, the bigger part that I have concern with, is just the stipend. My colleague had a conversation with me in terms about the on-call stipend, and again, I wasn't here for that conversation, that took place in, in public, but you and I then had a conversation about this position, explaining the situation, so the job description before us would suggest that the conversation that you and I have had about, you know, one forty-nine, things of that nature, procurement, is outlined and captured in the job description. Do you have? Because I, I, I need, I guess I, I guess I need some.
Backup.
Right, and if, 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 if I'm in, in order for me not to support my colleague, because she, she makes some point and, I mean, some very specific arguments in terms of the job description, which are right in front of us, that I would, I would agree with her that her argument to suggest that that individual is just solely performing their function as outlined in the job description is accurate, from my standpoint, so I guess I would want to hear the administration's standpoint.
I guess what you said earlier, Counselor, if I may, is that there are other people doing similar responsibilities jobs at a higher pay, and that's what I think you said earlier, Seth, this brings her in line with the pay of what other people are doing.
In, in a very general sense.
She's elevated.
There's only, you know, there's, there's really no, maybe one or two other clerks who are working beyond their job description.
So let me, let me ask this question, has this job description been approved by the, the union?
This is the job description she's been working under for a while, yes.
So, but is it approved, do we know if it was appro, it was approved by the union? All right, that didn't help me.
No, and it doesn't help me, and I, and I recognize that, but again, I'm gonna tell you the truth.
I, I, I get that.
At, at the end of the day, you know, all of these, you know, you can find this job description for a number of other clerks at that eleven A six, uh, position. None of them are doing chapter one forty-nine, none of them are helping to originate bids, um, you know, none of them are doing the same level of, of, of work when it comes to the, the construction procurement piece. I will say that there are some, they are not clerks, and most of them are not in the union, which makes this more difficult, uh, who are making in that fifty-six to sixty thousand dollar range, who are not clerks, but they're not management, and they are working at a higher level of independence, similar to this particular person.
All right, so I, I guess this is where, where I stand, just to, so that we can move on, I absolutely agree with my colleague in seat two, however, um, I am not gonna, if, if we're combining this, these two motions, I'm not gonna support it. My argument, or my, I guess, my request to you would be to try to clean this up through negotiations or unions and, and have that equity, and the only reason I won't support my, my colleague in seat two on this is, is just because the individual has been receiving this, and I know it's a stipend, I know it's only, it's a year-to-year situation, but unfortunately, folks rely on this type of, um, money's coming in.
This is the first time she's getting the stipend.
Has she not received it?
She's been getting service out of rank for, for more than two years.
So she has been receiving that, service out of rank?
She's been receiving some level of service out of rank, yes, because the, the salary is incorrect, it's not gonna look like it's the same amount of service out of rank, but she's been getting.
So the, so the service out of rank, let me, let me ask the question, because I want to understand this, so if, if we reduce the thirteen thousand dollars, does she lose money?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor seat two, I know we've said we don't get back and forth, but go ahead, please ask for.
So in the 2024 budget, there was no stipend?
That's true, there was no stipend, this was mislabeled as a stipend, it's not a stipend, it never was.
Okay.
It was service out of rank.
So in this thing, it's called a stipend, we're discussing a stipend. What I'm understanding is, we want her to get more money for the work she's doing, because she's doing work that's at another level that gets paid more money than she does.
I would agree.
Okay. But yet, this says, you cannot give a stipend for job performance. So the stipend is invalid according to Attorney Ramsey's opinion. Because you're increasing her salary based on the work you believe she's doing.
So, point of information, could I, so there's, there's a legal definition or a contractual definition, I guess it would be both, right, a legal and a contractual definition that's outlined in the collective bargaining agreements, that service out of rank is, it, it's, it's there, there's a definition associated with it, so it's not a stipend, so I would agree with you, if you're, if, if it was mislabeled as a stipend, which is what I'm hearing from the administration, that she's truly getting paid service out of rank, which is captured in the collective bargaining agreement, then I think we're talking about two totally different items, is that?
It was mislabeled, it's a mistake.
It's service out of rank, not a stipend.
It's service out of rank.
Okay.
Okay, let's have to move on, I agree, thank you, Counselor.
All right, I will amend my motion to reduce the two part-time positions by, so he can continue to get paid, but I still would like to see you go to ordinance and actually create the position, that would be appreciated. So the second one, let's see, where are we, facilities? To reduce it by nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars instead.
So you're gonna eliminate your first motion and now reduce it by nineteen thousand?
Instead of the thirty-eight, the thirty-six, what is it, instead of the thirty-nine thousand, seeing that they, that person's being paid and nobody wants to see him not get paid, I will reduce the position that nobody has filled yet for nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty, until the proper channels are followed, and still reduce the stipend, so now we're looking at nineteen, twenty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three, if you add.
If any of the councils have numbers, they want to do, please do the math prior, so the clerks won't go, their batteries are on, they're not in the calculators.
Yeah, so it's nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen thousand, fifty dollars, whatever those two total.
Is there a second to the motion? There being no second, motion doesn't carry, is there another motion? Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
But her, her motion's still on the table. She was just amended.
There's no second, there's no, okay, so the original motion's just in our table, you're correct.
Correct.
The original motion for fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars is still on the table, no one seconded that motion you just made. Roll call on this motion, the fifty-two thousand.
There's no motion, nobody gave it a second.
Oh, there was no second on that?
There wasn't a second on the.
On her amendment.
On either one, Counselor.
On either.
Oh, I thought there was a second on the first. Counselor seat seven, you didn't second that motion?
I haven't said anything in the past twenty-five minutes.
Okay, I thought there was.
Yeah, you think you did.
I mean, if there was no second on the motion, why are we having discussion on that?
I think you did.
I could have sworn.
There was no second.
Okay, that won't happen again, trust me.
Everyone makes mistakes.
Go ahead.
Cliff, you didn't second that?
Nope.
It's televised, we'll find out, someone I thought did, but that's okay.
I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
They're gonna look at the tape tomorrow, because.
Okay, so what do we have before us, Counselors?
Motion to approve.
D one, two, three, four.
Total amount, my, my, the total amount, mind, reducing it by ten thousand dollars would make the salary account one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve that line item.
Correct.
Motion hasn't made, is there a second?
Where is that?
D one.
D one?
Second.
D one, facility salaries.
Second.
Second, on the motion, roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Motion carries, Madam Clerk? D three?
D, E. There's no D three, Counselor.
Okay.
What is this, what was that salary, out of who's salary?
We're on to E, for the purpose of community maintenance.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, on the motion, Counselor in seat two.
Okay, um, page one sixty-eight, streets and highways, same thing, electricity, budgeted at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, in the FY twenty-fourth third quarter budget, they only used twenty-eight point two percent of that budgeted amount, so I would suggest to make the motion that we reduce that by seventy-five thousand, uh, for the budget to be a hundred and fifty thousand. I, I don't see they're ever gonna use seventy-five percent, oh, excuse me, sixty-two point eight percent of, in one quarter. So my motion is to reduce the bud, the electric by seventy-five thousand dollars.
Motion hasn't made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion hasn't made and seconded, roll call.
Can we just make sure what, the number is?
As a point of information, um, the general fund for facilities expense will be reduced to seventy-five thousand dollars, that will equate to a number of two million, five.
They put up the community.
No, I thought we were on E.
Oh, I'm sorry, disregarding, I'm just trying to help. Don't yell at me.
So he does his closing costs.
E two, which is for community maintenance expense, reducing by seventy-five thousand, bringing the total to thirteen million, three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
The motion has been seconded, roll call.
On the motion, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
No.
President Kamara?
No.
The motion fails.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, made and seconded.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Are we approving the entire one through three, which would be the total amount of eighteen million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars?
Correct.
Um, approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
No.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
Line item F, for the purpose of community service, would be one through four, total amount being three million, nine hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred six dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been seconded, roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
Line G, one through three, total amount being one hundred ninety-one million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve made and seconded, roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
H, for the purpose of community protection, lines one through eight, total amount is forty-six million, eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, on the motion, Counselor seat two.
Same thing, it's page two twenty-eight, electricity, budgeted at two hundred and twenty thousand, expended in the third quarter, only forty-two point six percent, so the motion would be to reduce that item by fifty thousand dollars.
Bring it to forty-six million, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, correct?
You're reducing the expense line, E, H two, correct?
Correct.
I'll talk about the total.
Could you repeat that, Alphin?
Fifty thousand is being reduced in the expense line, Counselor.
Okay. So the expense line item would then be two million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars.
Correct.
Do you, Counselor, seat two?
I do.
Counselor seat one?
Thank you, Mr. President, is, is this a similar situation? I, I would think this is a little bit different, right, this has nothing to do with the power purchase agreements or anything like that.
I don't believe so, and I just, I mean, they may not have their, the bills may not have been in, again, it's a timing thing of when the purchases, the requisitions get in, the invoices, they go through the approval process.
I guess, can you, um, just in, so we don't know how accurate the bills are from.
We didn't get the actuals, Counselor, from the budget, that's one of the points I made over and over.
Yeah, nobody asked, there, there wasn't a question asked to provide that, I mean, so tonight.
So I, I guess that's what I'm, before, to, to my colleague in seat two, I, I just don't, without knowing where we are with the actuals, we could be three months behind on the billing from national grid, right?
Yeah.
So that would, that would have an impact.
Absolutely, Counselor.
Just as a point of information?
I yield to my counsel.
Hold on, you yield, Counselor seat two.
Just as a point of information, in the FY twenty-four budget, that electric budget was reduced already based on historical data, that their budget, their electric budget was not expended, and it was reduced in the FY twenty-four budget.
What amount?
Um, I believe it was, I should have written it down, um, I may have, it was either two fifty reduced to two twenty, or two forty reduced to two twenty.
So it was reduced by ten thousand dollars?
Excuse me?
So it was, it was reduced by ten thousand dollars?
No, either tw, uh, twenty or thirty thousand, but that was in FY twenty-four, and that was based on, uh, historical, um, so again, this year, they're still, we're in the budget, but whatever, it's, it's whatever the, the council, that's my motion, I yield.
Okay, that's, that's my point, maybe we should just keep doing that, make the motion and let the councils decide, Counselor seat one, you, Counselor.
To, uh, through you, Mr. President, so, to my colleague in seat two, how did, how did she make the determination, what actuals did you look at? I guess that would just help me.
We didn't have the actuals in this budget, so she's probably going back to two thousand twenty-four, but I can speak for her.
Using the budget book based on the reduction, and then in the FY twenty-four budget, where it was specified that it was due to historical, um, for historical reasons.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Are you all set, Madam Clerk, the total that was reduced?
Yes, we reduced it by fifty thousand dollars, so the total was, uh, forty-six million, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars in total.
Roll call.
Was there a second, there was?
Yeah.
No?
There was no second.
Okay, there be no second, I'll stay another motion.
Motion to approve has been presented.
Second.
Motion to approve has been seconded, roll call, we got a second that time.
So this would be H one through eight, as it was presented, approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yep.
Repozo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
Can I just ask, uh, Mr. President, through you, if we can just get the updates on where, where those numbers truly are, if we are behind on the electric bills? Thank you.
While, while we're on that subject, I would appreciate it next year to put the actuals in the budget, please. If, I don't know who's gonna be here, but if they don't come down with actuals, I just might send it right back, or the council might just take it, or I'll make a motion to send it right back with the actuals in it, to make the process a lot easier for next year. Madam Clerk?
Under I, one through four, we have for the purpose of other governmental expenses, the total amount being ninety-six million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand. Under I, one through four, we have for the purpose of other governmental expenses, the total amount being 96,985,38.
Motion to approve.
Motion to take items I, one through four separately?
Motion is made to take items I, one through four. Is there a second?
Separately.
Separately.
Second.
We have a second. On the motion, roll call.
What was the motion to approve?
To take items one through four separately.
In I.
Okay. Apologize.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Madam Clerk?
I won from the general fund for debt service, 14,755,881 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
I two, from the general fund for insurance, in the amount of 40,826,925.
Counselor, can we please let the clerk here so we can hear it without there being discussion? Thank you.
Motion to reduce the insurance to by 1,568,488, and a comment, if I may.
Soon as there's a second.
Second.
One three six eight?
1,568,488.
1,500,68,488, correct?
Yep.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded, and the motion comes to seat six, Counselor Ponti.
Thank you. By the way, I do feel for any residents watching at home tonight, because they are probably spinning like crazy, so I apologize in advance, but I will say that, um, the reason this number came about was because my real emphasis here is to not use one-time money. And if my understanding so far, the city council has already cut the budget by $85,000, $10,000 under general funds, and $75,000 under financial services, as of right now. We've already cut, correct?
The financial services failed.
It was 75,000 for the, um, was it for the assessor? I'm sorry, for the-
Purchasing agent.
Purchasing agent?
That failed.
That failed, okay, I apologize. So the Council's only reduced the budget by $10,000 as of right now?
No, 60,000 in-
No, Counselor, you made more reductions than that.
What is the total amount reduced to date?
70,000 in total, and it was from facilities maintenance.
Yeah. All right, so it was only 70, okay. And the reason for that is because I'm really trying to find a way to get the budget down as much as we can to not use one-time money, so that 1,568,488 will help us get down to not use one-time money, since we've already reduced it by 70. And then I plan to do another motion under the reserve account to break that a total even of 2.3 million dollars of one-time money not being used in this municipal budget. So that is my motion, and that's the reason that number came about. I yield.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded, roll call.
On the reduction, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
No.
President Kamara?
No.
Motion fails.
Somebody can make a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Seconded.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, roll call.
On approval of the line item in the total amount of 40,826,925 dollars, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
No.
Reposo?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
I three, from the general fund for pension contributions, in the amount of 40,555,720 dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Abstained.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
And I four, from the general fund for reserve fund, in the amount of 846,512 dollars.
Motion to reduce by 646,512 dollars, to make that an even 200,000 dollars in the reserve account.
Second.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded, roll call.
On the reduction, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, question. Once it's all said and done, do we get an updated copy of the final?
I'm sure you will, Counselor.
Thank you.
Be in your mailbox tomorrow morning.
I look forward to it.
Point of information?
Counselor seat six?
So we will be then, with the reductions that the Council made tonight, we will then, um, have a new operating budget and a new amount in the appropriation on the top that we would adopt as a body, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct, before the end of the night.
She's doing that.
Right, I know she's probably doing that now, so thank you.
I'll ask the CFO to correct me if I'm wrong, but the total operating budget would be the amount of 412,859,533.
412 what?
859,533.
Can we have a two-minute recess, Mr. President?
For?
So we can make sure that the numbers add up?
City Council recess for two minutes. City Council meeting, will we convene? Madam Clerk, will you read out the total as amended?
So this would be voting on the budget as amended, in the total amount of 412,218,021 dollars.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve as amended, hasn't been made and seconded, roll call.
On adoption as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you pick up where we left off?
Yes.
So the, the next item we have before you is the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment of David Underhill to the housing authority.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I got a question, sorry.
On the motion, Counselor seat two, that's okay, Counselor.
I just want to ask if we can, well, I'm gonna make a motion to table this. I just got some information saying that the tenants did not vote on this. Is this a tenant representative?
Yes.
Yes.
So can we just get, I'm gonna make a motion to table. Can we get some clarification from the administration that an actual vote was taking place?
Second.
Motion to table hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item's tabled. Yes, could someone please?
I didn't think it was that powerful. Cliff asked me to-
Madam Clerk?
Item three is a communication from the mayor in an order authorizing a cost of living adjustment. Before I read this out, there is an error on the agenda. It should say 3% on a $12,000 base amount for city retirees for FY 24.
Motion to amend to 12,000? Seconded.
The order is correct. The order is correct.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's just the agenda.
Second.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Counselor seat five abstained.
Item four is a communication from the mayor in a request to reduce Bristol County ARPA funds for the Veterans Assistance Program from the allocated $250,000 to $20,000 due to obligation requirements by the U.S. Department of the Treasury.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is a communication from the mayor in proposed ordinance regarding buildings and building properties and property maintenance.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinances?
Second.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on May 28th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be referred to the administration with an expected response within 30 days. This communication was from a city resident requesting to purchase a parcel of city-owned land.
Motion to move.
Motion hasn't been made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on May 28th, unanimously voted to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted. This is an order authorizing an RFP for the sale of Hick Street Lot.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made, is there a second? And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is a proposed ordinance for second reading and enrollment that relates to the engineering department's permit fees.
Motion so made.
Motion to pass for second reading and enrollment hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is an ordinance for second reading and enrollment that relates to the minimum housing and municipal organizational structure.
Passed through second reading and enrollment.
Second.
Motion to pass for second reading and enrollment hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Counselor seat seven opposed.
Whereas after the reorganization of certain departments took place to increase efficiencies across the city, whereas the Director of City Operations is prepared to make a presentation to the City Council, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the Director of City Operations to allow this presentation to commit.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas many children in the city of Fall River do not have access to transportation to the Greater Fall River Art Association, and whereas the Greater Fall River Art Association could purchase an art-mobile vehicle, and whereas this will bring art activities to children that cannot get transportation to the Greater Fall River Art Association, and whereas this would allow art to be brought to parks, schools, housing complexes, and other city events, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance put forth a Bristol County ARPA application to help the Greater Fall River Art Association purchase an art-mobile vehicle.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13 is the order granting permission to Denise Diago for the removal of curbing at 401 Hyacinth Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14 is an order granting permission to 164 Elm Street LLC for the removal of curbing at 164 Elm Street.
Motion to adopt. Seconded.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 15 is an order granting permission to the Di Stefano Family Living Trust for removal of curbing at 311 Pine Street and Purchase Street.
Motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the order granting permission to Seraphine Souza for removal of curbing at 177 Doyle Street and North Rockland Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 17 is an order granting permission to Sharon Vieira, operating as J&amp;J Diamond Jewelers, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Headley Police Chief's report?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If I, if I may, item number 14, I voted in favor of, and I need to abstain. Can we go back and revisit?
Motion to reconsider, second.
Motion reconsider, item 14, hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Has it been seconded?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Mr. President, you might want to have Counsel, Vice President just take the roll call, if you understand.
Copy.
If you understand.
Counsel President Kamara?
No, we can just take a roll call, though.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Motion is to adopt.
So this would be the order granting permission to 164 Elm Street LLC for the removal of curbing at 164 Elm Street.
Vote up.
Second. Roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby? Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Abstained. Madam Clerk?
Item 19 is an application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license at 673 Bedford Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt hasn't been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number of claims. We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, item twenty-two is the final report on the acceptance of Gatehouse Drive from Prospect Street southerly to Maple Street. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, there's a second.
Seconded.
On the second motion to approve, uh, councilor C six, councilor Ponti?
Uh, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, did the city engineer, uh, make a, a, an opinion on this? Did he, is he in favor of accepting the street?
We have the, um, the report, uh, he, he replied on behalf of the planning board. Um, the planning board did recommend acceptance, um, but he did add a comment, um, that the committee had asked that to provide the council with a preliminary estimate in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars for the restoration of the remaining asphalt surface to, to an acceptable standard.
At whose expense, the city's expense?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll roll call this. I yield.
Thank you, councilor. Motion to approve has been made and seconded, roll call.
On that final report, Councilor's Kadim?
No.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.